It is 6:31. Alrighty, everybody, good evening, good evening. Invite everybody to take a seat as we start this regular Board of Commissioner meeting for the town of Waxahau on this November 10th, 2025. Great to see everybody, glad you made it out in spite of the weather going on out there. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence to give thanks and praise.
(inaudible)
Are there any amendments or adjustments to the agenda as written so far? Hearing none then, can I get a motion to adopt tonight's agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
This agenda is now adopted. Next up, we have general public comments. You have three minutes to speak, direct it to the board as a whole and not an individual, and keep it polite and civil and all that other whatnot. First up, we have Mr. Bill Ramsey.
I'd like to speak to the ordinance about parking on Red Oak Trail. I read the proposed ordinance from the October 28th meeting. I read what traffic had suggested as some changes. I looked at the sketches. I'd suggest a couple of things to you. This comes from a person that's lived there for 10 years. I drive that road at least once a day in a pickup truck or a car. I walk those sidewalks at least three, four, or five times a week. The suggestion that there may be a similar intersection somewhere within your jurisdiction, I haven't found it. I haven't heard you reference it specifically, and I'll be honest, I don't think there is one that compares in terms of width of the road with a single exit and entrance with a business in front on Providence Road, which we know is becoming increasingly congested. That intersection was dangerous and has become more so since the end of COVID, since those businesses located there. It's become more congested, and I believe the suggestion from the sketches that simple math will tell you that width is not enough to accommodate the wide turning radius required by longer chassied vehicles, by vehicles pulling trailers, by vans, by semis, by school buses, and accompanying with a reasonably good-sized SUV on the other side. Putting parking on both sides of that intersection compromises the sightlines first and foremost. It's going to make it more difficult for people to see who are walking. It's going to make it more difficult for people who are particularly trying to get on Providence Road. You need some good sight. You really do. There's not a stoplight for a mile either way. 35 is a speed limit. We all know what that means in terms of real traffic speed and safety to enter and egress that intersection. Your job is a responsibility, I understand, to the business owners, the residents, but most of all, it's responsible to public safety and the common good. And I don't see that either one of these ordinances which allow and permit parking on both sides of that street do anything but decrease the safety of drivers and of pedestrians, people trying to cross that street, people trying to get off across Providence Road, people trying to enter and egress from the development itself. If we can find another intersection, let's go look and see what those residents and the town council and the ordinances and the business that's located in the front of it have done about parking adjacent to a street like Providence Road. We'll all listen.
Thank you. Alrighty, next up, Mr. Dell Archer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am very excited for December the 9th, and I hope that this entire room will be packed and our fire marshal is alerted to be prepared for same. I want to read a couple of quotes. One is from Theodore Roosevelt. It's titled "The Man," and I would say the man and the woman in the arena. "It is not the critic who counts, nor the man who points out how the strong man stumbles, or whether the doer of deeds could have done them better. The credit belongs to the man and woman who is actually in the arena, whose face is marred by dust and sweat and blood, who strives valiantly, who errs, who comes short again and again because there's no effort without error and shortcoming, but who does so actually striving to do the deeds, who knows great enthusiasms, the great devotions, who spends himself and herself in a worthy cause, who at the best knows in the end the triumph of high achievement, and who at the worst, if they fail, at least fails while daring greatly, so that their place shall never be with those cold and timid souls who neither know victory nor defeat." Want to also quote from Charlotte's native son, Dr. Billy Graham. "Courage is contagious. When a brave man takes a stand, the spines of others are often stiffened." Friends, several years ago now, some people here in this room took a stand, and you have led valiantly, you have led with courage and integrity, you have set an example that the citizens of Waxahau, not once, but now twice, have voted in overwhelming numbers to affirm that leadership. And I am deeply grateful, as are my family and my friends, and I look forward to celebrating on December the 9th what God has done in Waxahau, North Carolina. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Ms. Judy Davis.
No rebuttals. No, I'm just kidding. I'm watching y'all. I'm watching. I live 45 seconds away. Now, I wanted to do a second request for deer crossing signs. I believe I did it one other time for DOT. My daughter and my grandsons, a couple of weeks ago, got hit by a deer. Fortunately, they're all okay. The deer's okay. It was a big buck deer, and it was Waxahau Marvin Road towards Helms Road. But I've seen deer, the last time I saw that pack of deer crossing at Kensington, I've seen deer coming near the Harris Teeter parking lot, and I know with the construction and all that stuff, they will die out and stuff like that. But I don't think so with the water and the water plant that's nearby, but I just, I just, please consider a deer crossing sign somewhere or some kind of notification, because the people are speeding down Kensington, Waxahau Marvin Road. And number two, I'm grateful that the Military Wall Veterans Day event was changed to an indoor ice facility. I remember when they didn't have that, and I was there for the first one with my mom and dad, and it's going to be cold tomorrow, and I know it's snowing now, but thank you. And Gladys McCain Carr thanks you too, because she can park, she's 91, still drives, and she can park easier here, the handicap spots here, even though the Swedish parking rep people would help get her in. And number three, I want to thank you, oh, my time, I've got her, I only want two minutes instead of three. I want to thank the three people that have served us well, because I remember all the meetings, I watched it online, I remember what battles you had to go through, but guess what? Religion, politics, and sports, it's all the same. I've never lost a tailgate, I'm not a fair-weather fan, I've got all my Panther stuff on. Just remember that life is apples and oranges, it's balanced, so thank you so much for leaving, and thank you for the ones, he never smiles. Thank you for that, now you are, thank you, because I'm watching, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Try to smile more, Rich. Next up, Diana Ayers.
My husband and I have retired here since October of 2012, after living in five states, and I want to take this opportunity to state that population growth is inevitable, despite the thought that not in my neighborhood is a prevalent idea to preserve past and future growth. Waxahau residents need to put pressure on Union County Commissioners if they want relief in schools and on buses. Only those commissioners have the monetary wherewithal to help parents and their children with new schools and buses, not the Waxahau Commissioners. As for the problem of traffic through our downtown area, our new Board of Commissioners will have the opportunity to relieve this congestion. Waxahau has paid for several studies to find ways to help divert commuters from the center of town, and it is hoped our new Commissioners will step up and adopt extending Waxahau Parkway by CVS and the post office to Route 75 in the Monroe area and 521 to Lancaster. The Waxahau residents need to make sure that our elected officials are just as vocal as they have been in previous issue meetings. We need everyone to work together with the state to accomplish positive help to our community. Finally, I would like to thank our present Commissioners who have given of their time under sometimes stressful situations to lead Waxahau forward. Working together is hard, and it is not always popular, but I truly believe they had the best interests of the community in mind. I wish the best to our three departing Commissioners and hope the new Commissioners will keep Waxahau moving forward, because stagnation helps no one. Also, thank you to other candidates who offered their services during this last election. Please continue to be active in our community. And finally, a special thanks to those special individuals in various departments who work tirelessly for the Waxahau family community.
Thank you. Next up, Edwin Elam.
To the mayor, mayor pro tem, Commissioners, town clerk, town manager, town attorney, staff, and above all, the citizens of Waxahau. On behalf of every decent-minded individual that lives in our jurisdiction, I want to say thank you to the three departing Commissioners who have done sometimes a Herculean job, it's probably one of the most thankless jobs, but you've actually helped people in these four years and some of you longer that you have served. Old Town was supposed to be the worst thing in the world, but it's turned out to be against all odds, one of the best shining lights in the town of Waxahau. We have seen truths, we have seen lies, we have seen bias, and we've just seen plain bad government sometimes, and even worse. But mostly, when things have worked well from the dais, we've seen some good things as well here in the town of Waxahau. We have seen concerning items in the budget, we have seen theft in some of the receipts that have been done, especially in 2019, and we've seen the most appalling thing of all, the silence from the uninformed masses. It is my hope and prayer that each of you will be able to see better, see clearer, and see farther because of the time that you have served here, so that you, when you become citizens again on this side of the dais, that you will be able to help all of us see even deeper.
Thank you. Next up, Barbie, I believe you have an email submission, a comment?
Yes, sir. This is from William Gonzalez. It's on the proposed ordinance for the Red Oaks Trail parking. Honorable mayor, Commissioners, and manager, we submit this letter on behalf of the business owners, operators, employees, customers, and clients of the commercial property located at 3808 Providence Road South, corner of Red Oaks Trail. We appreciate the town's commitment to safety and orderly growth. At the same time, we are concerned that proposed ordinance, ORD 2025012, Red Oaks Trail Parking, as previously presented and recommended, risks departing from the town's adopted plans and standard engineering practices and could unintentionally create unequal treatment relative to other town-owned maintained roads. Our request is simple. Please ensure any change to on-street parking on Red Oaks Trail is grounded in the engineering study and applied consistently townwide, not created as one-off rule for a single block, single set of neighbors, or single property. Number one, consistency of state standards and impartial process. Waxahau policies should be applied uniformly and comparable streets. A piecemeal approach where a single segment is regulated differently without demonstrable data supported. Distincts invites outcomes that can be perceived as arbitrary and capricious, or I think, capricious, sorry, or influenced by personality and favoritism. We respectfully ask the Board to reaffirm the decisions will be equitable, neutral, and consistently applied across the town-owned maintained roads. Number two, what FHWA NCDOT policy says about mid-block crosswalks at this location. Staff has cited FHWA and NCDOT guidance in recent discussions. We agree those sources should control, and importantly, they do not support installing a mid-block crossing at the suggested Red Oaks Trail location per NCDOT standards practice for crosswalks, mid-block, unsignalized signing. A mid-block crosswalk should be defined as any crosswalk that is not located within an intersection. It will be the standard practice of NCDOT to install mid-block crosswalks based on an engineering study. All mid-block crosswalks shall be signed and marked in compliance with the MUTCD, the North Carolina Supplement of the MUTCD, the current NCDOT roadway standard drawings. Installation of a mid-block crosswalk shall be made only after an engineering study determines that other alternatives, traffic control measures, are not justified, and that a mid-block crosswalk can enhance the transportation operations and pedestrian safety. There's three pages of this, Mayor. Do you want me to read the entire three pages?
Yeah, five minutes.
Well, for reading, it's 15 minutes. You're allowed 15 minutes to read a comment in there, but if you'd like for me to read the entire thing, I'll be happy to, but it's four pages.
Yeah, I mean, I think we could submit that. It's getting long already. Thank you. Alrighty, next up is the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, consent agenda is so adopted. Next up, we have recognitions. Mr. Dan Garrett, Downtown Waxahau Association.
Good evening. I'm Dan Garrett, a resident of Waxahau, and I'm joined at the podium by Jim Hill and Rick Bandazian. We serve as volunteers in the town of Waxahau and on the Board of Directors of the Downtown Waxahau Association. It's a 501(c)(3) organization, and our mission is to be the leading resource to preserve, promote, and bridge the past, present, and future of Downtown Waxahau. Five years ago, community leaders, town staff, and the Board of Commissioners wisely chose to make an investment in Waxahau's downtown. A full-time downtown director was hired to revitalize and lead improvements in our historic downtown. This led to enhanced communication and collaboration with downtown property and business owners and to spur on economic development for locally-owned businesses. Improvements were made for walkability and safety, and town events such as Fright Night and St. Patty's Day were coordinated. The Main Street program was accredited. Downtown businesses in the town received awards for projects that were completed. A core of volunteers was nurtured, the Downtown Waxahau Association was formed, and a downtown master plan for the next decade was established. Waxahau's investment has paid off in the historic charming and vibrant downtown that is a source of our civic pride and our residents enjoy today and will in the future. All of this was accomplished by the involvement of many people and the leadership and hands-on work of dedicated leaders. At our recent DWA Board meeting, we passed a resolution of appreciation for foundational leadership and community impact. We are pleased to share it formally with the town this evening. Resolution of appreciation for foundational leadership and community impact. Whereas, the Board of Directors of the Downtown Waxahau Association wishes to formally recognize and express its deepest gratitude for the foundational service and transformative contributions of its outgoing executive director and two key board members. And whereas, the DWA recognizes the extraordinary efforts of Ashley Noel, who served as the first executive director, and whose leadership was paramount to the establishment and early success of the organization. Whereas, the DWA further recognizes Brendan McMillan and Tracy Westlock, who diligently served on the Board of Directors and provided strategic oversight and governance during the DWA's critical startup phase. Whereas, these dedicated individuals were instrumental in the creation and establishment of the Downtown Waxahau Association, building the framework for its ongoing mission. And whereas, this collaborative effort successfully facilitated the accreditation of the DWA as a state and nationally recognized Main Street organization, positioning our downtown for long-term revitalization. And whereas, they demonstrated exceptional commitment in the coordination and collaboration of community events and activities which significantly increase local engagement and draw to our downtown area. Whereas, they provided crucial support for local businesses, helping to foster a vibrant economic climate that contributed directly to the economic vitality of the town of Waxahau. And they also coordinated and helped drive downtown renovation and street improvements, fundamentally enhancing the beauty and functionality of the district, and directed the comprehensive development of the Downtown Waxahau Master Plan for the next 10 years to provide a clear strategic roadmap for sustainable growth. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Directors of the DWA, on behalf of all staff, volunteers, partners, and the entire Waxahau community, does hereby express its sincere and profound appreciation for Ashley Noel, Brendan McMillan, and Tracy Westlock, for their vision, dedication, and extraordinary work in making the Downtown Waxahau Association a thriving entity. Be it further resolved that this resolution shall be spread upon the minutes of this meeting as a permanent record of their distinguished foundational service, and a certified copy shall be presented to them as a token of the Board's enduring gratitude. We adopted this, and it was signed on the third day of November 2025 by the Board of Directors of the Downtown Waxahau Association, signed by Dan Garrett, Board Chair, and Kat Richardson, Board Secretary. Thank you for allowing us this time to share our appreciation for the work of Ashley and Tracy and Brenda. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have presentations. Mr. Kevin Robinson.
I have Matt Nooncaster with City Explained, Inc., here today to present to you the Cost of Services Study. If you remember, this is something I think the city town started back in April, April or May of last year, so he has results of that, and he's going to present those to you right now. Okay, again, members of the Board, thank you for your time on the agenda today. My name is Matt Nooncaster, owner and founding principal of City Explained, Inc. Used to be in Marvin, North Carolina, now I'm in Camden, South Carolina, and not too far either way. I'm going to give a presentation today, and if I could give the context, I'm calling this a celebration. So, we feel we have finished the project, but the dialogue will still continue, but what I'm doing to you is starting the conversation with you as a Board, so we're giving this to you now. There's a lot of numbers and things that are here, but I've made the offer to staff, and I'll make the offer to you as well. If in early next year, you want it more in a work session setting, where you want to like really get into this and ask what if and but for, and what is, you know, what are the push-pull relationships between these things, I'm more than happy to come back if you'd have me as your guest, and we can get into that at that point. We could talk for hours about this, frankly, and I know you have a bigger agenda. So, I'm just going to give an overview today, introduce and just remind you what we did, because it has been a little time, review the final results of the macro analysis, which was town-wide, and that's what we had brought to you draft last time I was here, and then also the site studies that we've done, the microanalysis. And then I want to leave you with just some thoughts to think about in terms of value-add and capture discussion. So by way of introduction, in terms of a problem statement, well, you know, how do you hit the target if you don't know where the bullseye is? So this is kind of what I keep reminding myself, and most communities I work in, there's this disconnect. There's a misunderstanding between residents saying, I pay a tax bill, but where does it go and how is it used? Who actually provides those services? Because it's larger than just the town, you have other partners who provide the services to make a city function. The true cost of providing those services, so it's nice to cut the ribbon or purchase the vehicle, but then you have to maintain it, operate it, and replace it at some point in time. And then the resources that are available, and how do those meet the expectations of the residents? And you know that's because you go through the budgeting process every year, it's tough to fund all of the needs with the money you have, and how do you move things around and so forth. So to start with that problem statement, then you have to also think of how you stack the different responsibilities in Waxahau specifically about how these services are provided to a resident. So the town of Waxahau you see at the top has a pretty long list of things that you provide. You contract for your fire services, so you write a check out, and they provide the service for you. You have partners, you know, nearly all places in North Carolina, the county provides the schools, so you have Union County Public Schools to work with, as well as the Water and Sewer Authority that's there. And then you have Union County Government and all the other services. And then you have Union County Government and all the other services it provides that supplement or augment things that the town provides, and then the North Carolina Department of Transportation. So all these people are supposed to be working in unison in order to make sure that the city and the town function well. So of that, just a little bit of a formality. So for me, in the contract, I was charged first with just looking at how the town's resources are collected and spent. Again, it's a complicated project, a comprehensive strategy that needs to be discussed, but we have to eat an elephant one bite at a time, and so we started with what the town has to do. So we looked at the services you provide, and we focused on operating and maintenance. We did not run any capital spending plans or bonding programs or debt service analysis at this time. So then obviously, from the resident's perspective, they're saying, well, I need to know about all of those things. So what we did do was the first two boxes have been checked, and that's kind of what we're bringing to you today as a finished product that we can discuss further. And then we've sort of left the dangling wires or the spaces to be filled in for these other partners if we want to reach out to them and get some additional information. It can plug and play into what's going on. I'll tell you as well, since I've been here now with the new manager and the new planning director, they do have a lot of experience in fiscal impact analysis and the like. We've had good conversations, and so between the two of us, I think we can track some of this down and place it in as directed by the Board. So macro analysis first, townwide. So these are single numbers that represent everything going on, and so you just see up here, we looked at town limits because that matched your budget authority, so we said everything within town limits. Now, we did go back to the fiscal year 2324 budget. That's a small change from what we did last time, and it's because the assessment from the county was 2023. So in order to have apples to apples and not be spending more or less than you were in the year, you were collecting it for the assessment freeze, we wanted to go back to apples to apples. So 23 is it. From your budget book are all the different expenditure categories that you have. We looked at those. And then we were asked to look at six different categories of development. So we broke residential into detached, single-family, townhomes, and multifamily stacked. Right now, only apartments, no condominiums. And then retail, office, and industrial categories as well. And so when you start to look at these numbers and pull them apart, and again, for the planner geeks in the room or whatever, we have spreadsheet upon spreadsheet that you can dive into on this, but the takeaway information is on the slides. You are over overwhelming a single-family detached community, and you know this already, but all of the value from a residential perspective is up in the residential side. If you go to Union County Tax Authorities, it's almost four billion, or over $4 billion of assessed value. It's insane, kind of, when I think about how I do this around the country, that you're so far into that one category. When you go to the non-residential side, you have all three categories present, but predominantly it's the retail on 16 and others that is really driving your non-residential. And they're not really super balanced right now, but again, of the non-residential categories are overwhelmingly represented by retail. So as we did the analysis, again, townwide is looking at everything and averaging it out and looking for a single statistic, so you know the laws of averages, but basically we did four different approaches. One was we broke it down by tax value, so you had that $4 billion number compared to the others, so about 93% of your taxable value is residential, 7% is non-residential. For things like street maintenance, whether it's lights or paving or anything that needs to be done, we looked at the centerline miles that you had and what type of development it was serving. We worked with the police department to get breakdown of calls to different types of development, and then the recreation program participants. How many people were participating? Were they residents, non-residents? And if we could try to get it down to a unit, we tried to. So again, this is where I remind you the work session that I'm offering to have, because I don't want to, I mean, if you challenge me how many numbers I could fit on here, this is probably about it. But the takeaways from this is every row is one of your categories from your budget. And the columns to the right are the three different development categories. Now, one of the things to note here is while our objective was to break everything down by the three categories, sometimes that information just wasn't available. We couldn't figure out through our partners, like, how many vehicles are you, do you own in a townhome versus an apartment versus a single family? So we had to just assume the countywide statistic that we had there. And you see that happens a lot. That's why the numbers are the same across the row. So in terms of a per-dwelling-unit study, it's a very rich study. In terms of breaking out further than that, we might want to go back and collect more data in future years as it's available. I'll give you an example here where I was working with a Union County tax assessor, and we just could not find out how many commercial vehicles you had so I could tax them. Now, you could call out truck from the DMV website and things, but I mean, you can look left or right of your neighbors, one of them have an F-150, right? So I mean, that doesn't mean it's commercial. So that data just isn't quite available yet, and we just need to ask for it to be collected in a different way so that in future years, we can augment this tool you have. So generally, right now, in terms of the residential categories, it's really public service, public services and parks and recreation that are different that we were able to collect by the unit type. When you go into the retail side right now, again, all the categories are pretty similar except for police service. We were able to break that out, and we can break it out by residential if I hark back to the other slide, but we just have to be careful with sample size. You know, if we only have two apartment complexes or a very handful of townhome communities, is it one or two crazy neighbors in the neighborhood, or is it actually the trend of that type of development that's causing the change in prices? So we need to look at that as well. On the revenue side, again, we looked at the categories for which are in your budget, and under intergovernmental services, we rolled up several categories. Same thing for town fees, and same thing for miscellaneous. So if you're looking for those specifically, they're rolled up into the other categories. Here again, we tried to break this out as much as we could, but sometimes we had to use townwide averages that went across different development categories. So again, my example about how many vehicles are owned by different home types, we just couldn't get that information. So the U.S. Census, we had to go with their single pack that they have. In terms of doing the calculations, we either did it looking at tax base, so that 93/7 ratio, home occupancy rates, collection rates, vehicle ownership, household size, or other characteristics that could help us understand how to assign the different revenues and where they come from. So here again, you look in and kind of get to the brass tacks of this right now. So in terms of total annual revenues, you can see where it's highlighted in yellow. If you add all the different categories together, you have predominantly single-family detached homes are running the day for you. And if you look, it's because of the top column, the property taxes that are generated. You have homes that are of high value, and that high value generates high tax bills for those people who own those homes. It's not because it's a single-family detached home only. You can go to other communities where those are not worth as much, but single-family detached and in Waxaw happens to have a high value, therefore, the tax bill goes up. On the non-residential side, again, same stratification with some of the property taxes. You can see here, and it's confirmed in other studies we do, industrial tends to be a really good generator for you in terms of tax, especially compared to square footage that you have right now. But again, across the board, we did do a little bit of a nuance for the motor vehicle tax and tried to make an assumption for the retail uses. And the sales and use tax for both residential and non-residential in Union County is based off of ad valorem shares, not per capita, so that's why those are different. So here you look, and this is the break-even analysis. So this is basically saying what's happening when you look at expenditures and revenues for these different development types. So the two extremes, I think, are pretty good and grounded in the data. One is that the single-family detached is generating positive income for you per home on an annual basis, and the industrial is also doing that. The numbers in between, I think we have a little bit of issue with sample size, and so I, normally, like, if you just followed our contract, we would have stopped here. But I felt like we would have had some false indicators. That's why we went on to phase two of this work. So for anybody who's with the press or watching, before you write your news article on those numbers and things, let me just put a couple of disclaimers out for you that we're wrestling with. Number one is average statistics and small sample size in the analysis. So again, when you only have two apartment complexes, you only have two to three to four townhomes right now that we can look at, some of those can just be outlier numbers and really not born in the true averages as you look in continued development. So that's something. Then on the bottom, you see about the assumptions, the example of having the same vehicle ownership for every type. We know that can't be right because the number of bedrooms in a single-family detached tends to be more than an apartment. So truly, there has to be a difference in vehicle ownership as well. It's just we can't find it. We can't mine that data. So right now, it's an assumption. So there are assumptions in here that need to be taken into account when you look at the out-the-door numbers. The nice part about this is, as part of this product and this process, we provided all the worksheets, all the data, all the methodology. And so as more development comes in, it should be fed into this model, not every week, probably every year, but if you do that, you should be able to get updated data as you get more sample size, more experience coming in on different development. So again, we would have stopped at the macro analysis. I mean, that's the way the contract was set up, but then we just looked at the numbers and were like, you're not going to be happy with what you have. So instead, what we did was we went to a phase two called site studies, and it's a microanalysis. So what we did was we looked at existing development within the town and said, let's go look at what it is. Let's basically do like an X-ray approach and look at what's on the ground in these different places. So we took the most prevalent development patterns that we could find within the town. There's actually 23 sites that we looked at, and so I'll just pause here for a minute so you can kind of just let this burn in your brain, all the different neighborhoods we looked at, the shopping areas we looked at, apartments, the one Waxaw Professional Park and the like. So we have data on all of these places. And the way that data was collected, and this really tests my eyes, but the way this data was collected was basically, again, like an X-ray. So for each site, we said, well, how big is it? How is the land composed? Is it developed, open space, or onsite infrastructure? When was the first lot CO, sorry, certificate of occupancy polled or awarded, and when was the last one awarded? And when were the most of them awarded? So we get to know about when this neighborhood was built. Different design characteristics, number of lots, density, those kind of things. And then we do the minimum home size, maximum home size within the neighborhood, the average and the median. And so we go through this process, and I'm sorry, with persons per household, just know it's, we've had 40 days of the government being closed, so the U.S. Census Bureau website doesn't work. We can fill that in, but that's why it's missing, just so everybody's aware. On the right-hand side, then, we go through the market assessment of each of these neighborhoods as well. So we know what the minimum home is worth, the maximum home is worth within that neighborhood, and then the median and the median. And then we take those and actually run them through your town-only portion of the tax rate to see what is generating for the bottom line for the services you're responsible for providing, and we get that per acre and per unit. So again, we have that for every residential project that we looked at, and we can compare them. On the other side, we also looked at all the non-residential projects, and there we looked at the size of the project. Again, its composition of development, how was the land used, how many square feet are on there right now to get what's called a floor-area ratio, the ratio of building square feet to total square feet of the property. Again, employees can be filled in when the Census Bureau comes back online, and we'll get an employees per square foot. That'll be needed for some of the other things you might be looking at later. We get fair market value, and then we look at what is it worth per square foot, per acre, and the like. So what this comes down to, and again, I'm not going to go through all these numbers today, but I highlight it in green, these are sites that actually are performing better than the average. So if you go back to that earlier slide and you say, "Commercial does not pay for itself in the town of Waxaw," that's not true, only from the average perspective, but there are sites that are paying for themselves, and you see them in green on the bottom. There are residential sites that are paying for themselves, there's some others that aren't. And it's interesting as you kind of look at this and try to look for correlations, if you notice, like, on the residential side, the ones that are in green, for whatever reason, tend to be your bigger projects. And is it because they're getting more value from open space or neighborhood design? Like, we need to peel the onion and really look at the why, the causational factors, but this table is only to prove to you that don't just believe the average that we had from the macro analysis, because there are projects that are performing, and you have to understand why so that you know what to ask for in the next project that comes before you. So this just kind of pulls that table into a couple of very quick bar graphs for you. And some folks in my profession will tell you, it's all about how much tax value is generated per acre, and that's kind of how they look at the world. But if you look at that, sites 11 and 12 here are your two apartment complexes, you would say you should build apartment complexes all day because there's $25,000 per acre that you would be able to get from taxes on that. So somebody stops and says, let's just build all apartments, okay? But also just kind of look at this and say, well, look at the yellow to the red. So your residential is so high-valued, the homes are so expensive here, that it's almost performing like the retail does. Other places, that doesn't happen. So that's something to think about. The orange are the two townhome projects, which might actually end up being your sweet spot of density with tax production. So things to think about when you look at this. But again, this is value per acre. So think about, this slide is one acre in size, and if you're that apartment complex as an example, they're going to give you $25,000 for that one piece of property the size of a slide. But then let's look at it from other ways, too, because we can't just jump in and be naive. So we can also look at it at gross density per acre. And so again, as you would imagine, the multifamily have a lot more density on there. And the way I look at this is value per acre is a nice indicator, but these are your customers. These are the people who need a service. These are the people who get a bill. They either pay a tax bill, or they get a bill for the service. These are your customers. So when you look at that, you're like, okay, I'm getting a lot more money from multifamily, but I also got to serve a lot more people. So is it really lucrative or not? And so then you start to look at it per dwelling unit. And when you look at it per dwelling unit, you're saying, okay, for those customers who are writing me a check and expecting a service, this is where those single-family detached homes come back, they make their comeback in this slide about being really productive. And so you have to really look at it kind of from different lenses to understand really what is it that you want to accomplish. And so then you come into some other things, you're like, okay, well, single-family is performing best here, but it's actually consuming the most land, and there's other byproducts like having to drive or doing whatever. So even the fiscal findings and conclusions, you have to balance with everything else that's going on. So just two other things to think about as you go through this. Again, I would hope that we can think of what we've prepared for you more as a tool and a process than a product and a final deliverable, because the world is changing rapidly in Waxaw. And I'll just give you an example here. The first column is the assessed fair market value from 2023 from Union County. That's what the tax assessor says is the average of what your home is worth when you pay a tax bill by those housing types. I just happened to pull up Redfin today, and September is their latest numbers. And again, you just don't have enough sample size to break it up into townhomes and multifamily, or, you know, with condos, but at a median sale price at Redfin, you've already gained $70,000 from 2023, okay? So that could be good or bad, depending on your perspective. But then I went and pulled Zillow this morning, actually, as well, and if you go on Zillow right now in the Waxaw search area, the most expensive home on the market right now is $1.1 million, and the least expensive is $315,000. So your 600,000 number is sort of, sort of in the middle there, right? Kind of an average to a median, we have to look at the data. But what's interesting to me is those townhomes, because remember, the orange was creeping up with the yellow in terms of the value? Well, if you just take what's out there for sale right now, even the floor of what's available in Waxaw right now is $100,000 more than what the assessment is in 2023. So when you sell those townhomes, you are, like, even if you sell the lowest one, you're increasing that fair market value that's going to be used for taxing next time. So it's going to be something interesting to watch as you go through this process. And then the last thing I leave you with here is a, it's a long quote, and again, this is where I'm leaving this with you, and we can talk more about it in a work session, but if your goal, and let's say, for example, this quote's more like about downtown. So in downtown, the general rule of thumb is if you can have 1,000 dwelling units within a quarter-mile walk, you can sustain that community as a self-sustaining economy. The customers will rotate themselves enough that they can all stay in business. Now, this is assuming you don't need any parking, because these people would all be within walking distance. So when you don't have 1,000 dwelling units within a quarter mile, that's where you need parking, because you have to supplement that customer base to keep those businesses in line. But the reason this is important is because when you're looking at the financial performance, you may also be looking at, well, you know, around the downtown, we can't fit enough single-family homes to get enough customers. That's why you might look at townhomes, you might look at multifamily, where other parts of the town, you might look at it differently. This is a diversified development strategy so that you can be sustainable. And so I just, I put this out there because some communities I work in, they're like, just tell me the top-performing number, and that's all I want in the whole town. And that's really not a great idea, so I just want to put that out there. All right, so then I want to leave you, because I told you that we looked at the different service providers that you have and what their roles and perspectives are. I wanted to come back and just hit some things that the next application that comes in, things you can already be thinking about for your role within the total service strategy. So first is amenities. So when you look at neighborhoods, sometimes, you know, they'll come in and try to give you the triangles and the corners of the property, call it a dog park or something, and that's their open space. Well, if you can get meaningful open space that's connected and actually has identity and meaning, there are studies out there here, the National Recreation Park Association did 33 case studies and found an 8% to 10% bump in assessed value if you're near a park or a greenway. On the bottom, you can see there, that's a neighborhood in Cary, North Carolina. That's where I moved to. And if you look at where the star is, that's the house I bought, and I bought the second home in that entire phase, so I could have picked any lot I wanted. I picked that one, and they told me I had to pay him $15,000 extra because I was on a wooded lot and backed up to a greenway, and I gladly paid it. So again, looking at how these things are situated, looking at the proximity of units to the amenities can actually make better tax implications for you. to the amenities can actually make better tax implications for you. In Austin, Texas, Texas A&amp;M did a study, and they actually found a correlation of a 1% increase in what's called walkability score. Just think of the tree-lined street that you see in the middle there, making things more walkable and safe, was another $1,329 increase in the assessed value. Or even just looking at sidewalks gets you a $785 increase in assessed value. So the next time a developer says, "Can we just put sidewalks on one side of the street and the other?" Say, "No, it's a dollar and cents thing. It's about creating value and perception there." This is just from a study that was done by what's called R.C. Elko, and they went nationally and tried to find the highest amenities people are looking for now. So when you are looking at applications, look for these kind of amenities, and they tend to translate into better financial performance for your community. Then there's a consideration, I'll see how people, how old people are in the room, and the bottom right corner is an old Kmart, you know, they're gone, but some of us all remember walking through those, right? They were big time back then, but when they're deteriorating or here abandoned, they're bad for the tax rolls. So even if you can think of temporary things, whether it's food truck courts like you see here or whatever, to keep properties active, it will keep them assessed high, which will keep the taxes rolling in for you. So kind of always be on the lookout for those projects that are in decline, properties in decline. And I'm showing you this as a lesson to be learned, but I'm not promoting this kind of density here, I promise you. But this is actually North Hills in Raleigh, Six Forks Road and 440. And the top is an old strip mall that's there, and they actually redeveloped it into something very intense. I would never ask you to do anything like this, please. But the lessons to be learned here are proportional. So the numbers that you can't read on here show that the area in green is the mall site. As part of the mall site in, I think it was 2007, that was worth like $825,000 per acre when it was being assessed taxes. Same amount of land, same major roads around it and everything, they just made improvements, worked on mitigating impacts and things, but it's now worth over $4.6 million per acre. And that's just because of the density, the mix, the value that they were able to create. And so I'm not asking you to rebuild this anywhere near here, but just think about, even just incremental things can raise the value as you're going through your processes. And then also, you know, simply stated, nice design, good site layouts generate higher values for you in terms of tax production. You already do a great job of this, but just always ask for the highest finishes when you're going through your processes. And this is just an example. I won't tell you where this is, because I don't want to make them feel bad about it, but this is where they wanted density, but they didn't get anything but density. And again, going back to this quote, "Density mixed with amenities creates a neighborhood or a community. Density without is just crowded, and it just creates problems." So this was actually a project I was part of in West Haven in Franklin, Tennessee, and those townhomes are premium, premium townhomes, on the green, the way they're finished, those kinds of things as well. Same density, but just make sure they do it on your terms. And then just quickly, I'll show you, this is from a community in the Triangle. Again, I didn't want to bring up anybody too close to here, but they had gotten in a townhome project and the like, and what ended up happening was, they were trying to claim a mix of uses and things here, just basically using the code against the council kind of thing, picking words in there. And so we reviewed it and tried to help them. And so, for example, and I won't go through all of these, but like, they wanted to put extra buffer from the future I-540. We said, "Well, take it back and maybe use landscaping or walls or things, and then give that to on-street parking where you see number two, so we can have smaller parking lots throughout the property." Things like number five, they wanted to have a great site for their model home, but after the development was done, that would be an eyesore on a major street. So we said, "But make that a small commercial use," those kinds of things. So just always think about development and how it can be optimized to create place and therefore create value for you. There's just some pictures from that that just kind of show fenestration on eight. You see, as long as you're building townhomes, consider live-work units. I think Cedar Walk on Audrey Kill and Marvin Road is the only place I can find live-work units now, and everyone's dying to get one. Everyone who has this work-from-home, small-company idea, and again, they would be much higher value for you as you go through your process. And so then I'm just going to end on this as well. So in terms of jurisdictional considerations, and we can talk about more about this in a work session, but the people who visit you and create demand for your systems are beyond your town limits. So those are people who come in, don't pay property taxes, but use your facilities and then leave. They do pay sales tax or other things as you go through this. And that's what's called a trade area. So all those for-sale signs you see out in the country just beyond your town limits, those people are as good as Waxaw residents in terms of how they're going to count on you for their daily needs and daily lives. So if you just take an area right now and put the town limits on here, I think, and help me if I'm wrong, but there's about 3,000 or so plus or minus units that are on the books in Union County, but not in Waxaw. So those are folks who are going to use everything you have to offer, but not pay into the system. And so you got to be ready for that. It's going to be more strain on your police, more strain on your public works, and maybe your parks and rec, and your just park amenities. And so those people are coming in. So in a lot of ways, and I just circled the ones you could see on this, but if you zoom out, it's even greater. Some communities, like when you're doing your comprehensive planning, or you're, I know annexation in North Carolina is a bear now and those kinds of things, but as you're thinking about your future, or maybe approach the county and say, "Hey, this area's going to be in Waxaw eventually, 20, 30, 40, 50 years from now. Let us have some influence on planning it as well, so it's efficient for us." So I just throw that out there, you know, playing offense versus defense. So with that, as I mentioned in the beginning, all I was trying to do this evening is set this up. It's a very complicated and comprehensive study. I really do think a work session would be great to ask some very detailed questions or scenarios and the like, to really make you feel comfortable what you have and how you're going to use it moving forward. But I'm happy to answer any questions now.
Any questions from the board on this?
Thank you for all the hard work you put in. It's very comprehensive, but I, for one, will need a work session. I'll have to digest this, and if we could get a copy of it ahead of time, that'd be great.
Yeah. I echo that sentiment. I think a work session would be very valuable to kind of go through the weeds and dig deep and figure out a path forward.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, yes. And also, you know, we're not just operating a town government in isolation without any consideration for costs that our decisions impose on the county. And, you know, Waxaw residents are also Union County residents who have to bear those costs. So it would be great to have those hanging threads that you mentioned at the beginning filled in.
All righty. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All righty. Data update.
Well, hopefully, this flows from what Matt just presented somewhat. And I'm going to try to move through this a little bit quickly. I don't want to take all night on the data with you guys, but I'd appreciate if you give me a little bit of time to nerd out with you on some of this stuff. So this is the Fall 2025 Development Report. This is something where it's continually evolving as we add more information into it. And tonight, we'll go over some kind of development trends that we've got, take a look at residential development, non-residential development, take a look at those development valuations, and then some future updates in how we'd like to structure that with y'all, the board. So first, me coming from outside, you guys know a lot of this stuff, you've been here for a long time, but it's helpful for me to see kind of, okay, how did Waxaw develop? How did we get where we are right now? And really, outside of the historic downtown and some of the commercial corridors, Waxaw is largely defined by its subdivisions, which you can see there. We do have some annexed but undeveloped areas there, but most of the town outside of downtown is in those subdivisions. Now, I'm showing you this, I know you can't read it right now, but this is pretty much all of that development on a timeline, and we've weighted it based on size. This is your residential development, it's how Waxaw's grown. You can see up at the top there, Hillcrest, small development, and it still isn't completely built out. You can go down and see Lawson and Millbridge, two of our largest developments that we've had in the town. And you can see they, you know, there was a big building boom around 2004, 2003, 2004, and it went through until really just the last couple of years, when it kind of all built out. And then if you go to the bottom, you'll kind of see where we are now. You can see Emerson Park there in the dark green, and we're really kind of getting on to another boom, not quite as big as before, but a lot more units, smaller developments This is the big, this is the big number that everybody asks about. In the last 10 years, we've had just over 4,500 housing units go through the approval process. We have another 560-plus that are proposed right now. Currently, there's 3,870 units approved, in review or permitted for construction right now. These are all those that are either, that have been through some sort of approval with us, but they are not constructed, not on the ground yet. I'm going to take a look at this real quick. The brown is multifamily, the orange is townhomes, the yellow is single-family. We also include duplex and others. Others would be ADUs and cottage homes and stuff like that. There really aren't a ton of those, but I tried to sync this up a little bit with the kind of the scheme that Matt had there, so it might make a little bit more sense. If you look from 2016 at the bottom there, new residential units, 2016 to 2025, you'll see that we are in somewhat of a slump, actually, in terms of houses being built. It seems like they're going up everywhere. A lot of that is actually development and prep for new homes, but we're not seeing a ton of them completed at this time. We do have several that are permitted right now and before the end of the year. I think we'll be getting back up closer to 100 there. We're at, I think, 60-ish right now, something like that. And you can see the makeup right now of these units as well. Over two, over three-quarters, single-family. We've got the two apartment complexes that were built back in the 2017, 2018 that show up there as well. We do have some townhomes that have come online as well in the past four or five years that are represented there. And then, and I'll back up and just, real quick, describe some of this to you. The bottom here, it's hard to show some of this stuff apples to apples. The bottom, the new residential units built, 2016 to 2025, you can see there's 2,500, 2,600 of them there. A lot of those are those older subdivisions. So you're not going to see those in the rest of this. I think five, the 500 or so that were complete, those are represented down on the bottom graph as well as the top graph right there. And we kind of tried to draw a line where you could see what was complete so far. It doesn't match up exactly, but it's pretty close. Everything in the middle there is what's vested, what has been approved, what is going through review or permitting right now. That's that 3870. And then we've got the additional 560 that are proposed there, we have shown. And you can see that that, we do have quite a different mix, much more of a kind of an even mix of housing types. Still a lot of single-family, over a third of it is single-family detached, but then another third is townhomes. And a little bit smaller, we do have some multifamily apartments that are approved or proposed in there as well. This shows some additional detail, I won't go into all of this, but you can look at permit valuation, units per acre, not shown on there, but the overall average unit per acre over the, everything approved over the last 10 years is 3.41 units per acre. Non-residential development, we could call this commercial. I've tried to break it up a little bit, though, because I know that, you know, it's not all the same, and everybody does kind of want to know what does that commercial really mean. So we've got commercial, retail in red, offices that pink color, service is a light blue, industrial is kind of a light purple, and then we have a nonprofit and community, that's all your churches, all of your HOA buildings, all of your park buildings, town buildings, et cetera. Similar to what we showed on the last slide, you can look at new non-residential square foot built from 2016 to 2025. We're doing a substantial amount right now. Recently, we have a lot of commercial, retail that is approved, but we're not seeing all of that come online yet. A big chunk of that that we saw this year in '25 is service, and it is those storage units that are over there in Keraton. No, is it Keraton? Yeah. And you can also see that that mix, again, is going to change once all this does get built out. We're looking at a substantial amount more of actual commercial retail that would be coming online. Similar chart, almost very close to what we've got with the residential. We see that we have a lot of vested development, non-residential development right now. We've got a little bit of it completed, and then we've got some that's proposed, but a lot of it is in the pipeline. We also have permit valuations on there. You could see some spikes in '20 and '24. I believe one of those was actually this building, so that would come down substantially, depending on how you want to look at it. 6.2 million for non, the average since 2016 is 6.2 million for non-residential and 40.2 million for residential. So not quite the 93% to 7% makeup on the valuation. We may see that number, the residential number go down a little bit, but it's still very, very significant.
And that one graph, sorry, just to point out, if Town Hall was not on that 2024 line, that line, it would be below the 25?
No, I don't think it would be below. I think it was valued at 19. So it would drop significantly, though, yeah.
Yeah, it'd be about six then, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And then this is showing the, those valuations we just discussed there. We've also put in the overall, all other upfits and repairs, because that does come up, you know, what else is, what is inspections doing? And a large amount of that is also upfits to existing buildings, repairs, change orders, those types of things. So that's what this represents here. Again, you can see that residential's still by far the largest overall valuation by type, but it is, it is going, going down a little bit right now. We'll probably start to climb up again once we see some of those others come online. And I did add on here, subject to revisions, on the upfits and repairs, there's a couple of things on there that we need to take a look at addressing. I don't think it's going to throw it off drastically, but if you see that change in the future, that's what that's for. Learning where everything is still and trying to pull it all together a little bit. So what we would propose to do would be to give the board a kind of a detailed annual report similar to this in January of each year, and then summarize quarterly reports that'll probably be much shorter than this, and we'll focus more on the three-month data in between, in-between reports. And we would propose to do those in April, July and October. We are going to be adding into this. We're trying to take care of our GIS licensing right now, and then we will be able to get on there and add in some GIS mapping for this as well, to actually show you where all the new permits coming on are from.
Any questions from the board?
Thank you very much, Kevin. That's a great report. Thank you.
Next up, Chief Dex Wilson.
Good evening. I'm here with Stephen Cos, and he's here on behalf of Cos Motorsports Tour Deluxe Rally, Waxaw Coffee Cruisers and Cars and Coffee. It's a long list. They held a fundraiser for the Waxaw Police Department a few weeks ago, and where they raised $1,000, which they wanted to make a donation to the Waxaw Police Department to buy equipment, and we can utilize to get equipment for our K9 that we just got last board meeting and put that dog through training. So we wanted to say thank you so much to Stephen, and do you want to say anything?
Waxaw's a great community, as you all know. It has a great car community. If you have not been out to one of the Waxaw Coffee Cruisers meets, come out and check out all the nice cars. You get to see a lot of nice people. The police department's always been a strong supporter of us. They're out there every weekend or every month with us, and it's just the right thing to do for the police department, making sure they're properly equipped and have all the needs that they're all taken care of. So thank you, guys.
Thank you. It's great to see local charities giving back to the town. That's awesome. Thank you, Steve.
Good evening. I am here tonight to get a good celebration of some more donations coming to the town of Waxaw and our community. I have with Ms. Terry here with me, and she's going to give you I have with Ms., Ms. Terry here with me, and she's gonna give you some history about, uh, the Library Association, um, donation as well. There we go. Uh, as you see on your slide, we are, uh, being granted a $30,000 donation for a book unit that will be at the Learning Center that will, um, basically give the access to our community, um, that cannot get or drive or, um, have access to our, our new library up on Caperson. This also will give a great way for, um, access to our, uh, community that comes to the Learning Center for programs, um, as well to be able to access books from the library there. It would be broken up into two parts, uh, 20,000 to go for the unit itself, and then 10,000 for incidentals, um, and, uh, the information on the unit itself for wrapping, and then installation and the, um, fee for prescribing, uh, for the, kinda like the software for it, uh, for the unit. Um, we're super excited and to do this partnership with the, um, Union County Library and super grateful to our, um, our Library Association for giving this wonderful donation. I wanted to do a big thank you for that, and then Ms. Terry's going to give a little detail about the association.
So, I just wanted to give you a little background. A lot of people think that we are part of the library, which we really are not. We're a nonprofit, um, specifically for Waxall. Our mission has been to, um, have a new, larger library for the citizens of Waxall. We began working on that in 2009. Uh, and we raised money by operating a, uh, used bookstore in town. We sold books for $5 or less, except for, we did have a few that were a little bit more expensive, but most, all of them were less. We also raised money through donations, memberships, and we even allowed a TV show to film a scene in our store, earn money for that. None of this would have been possible without the volunteers that staffed the store, the members of LAW, and the countless supporters that donated books, as well as purchased our new books. As a result, LAW has been given approximately $15,000 to the Waxall Library for early literacy computers through the years, and we were also able to donate $100,000 to the new Southwest Regional Library that opened in 2024. Our organization was rec- recognized by the Union County Library by naming the adult reading area after our bookstore, the reading room. We also have enjoyed the support of the town of Waxall. Town manager Mike McLaurin helped us to find our, uh, new home when we lost our original store location. Commissioner Paul Fitzgerald actually put a new floor in the building down for us. And, um, Officer Vic Montalvo and his dad helped us to move. We had to, we had a month's time between when we had to move out of the old store into the new store, and we had filled up two pods, and, uh, he and his dad came and helped us load those up. And I especially, um, want to recognize and thank Mayor Pro Tem Brenda McMillan and Tracy Westlick for all of their support and being an advocate for the new library, and, um, also for the Learning Center. And I wanted to thank Dina for all of her help, uh, for working with us, um, to do this for the Learning Center. Therefore, the Board of Directors are donating $30,000 to the Town of Waxall Learning Center for book lockers that will support our mission to stimulate the use of the library's resources to support and cooperate with the local library services and facilities for the community. Thanks.
And so as you can see, this correlates with our vision and mission, um, for our community. And the question, uh, if y'all have any questions of us and the motion is there, um, for your leisure.
Uh, I think it was in the consent agenda, wasn't it? Yeah.
Okay. Well, it's already done, then.
Yep.
Yay.
Check and check.
Check to check. All right, I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Terry, for all your hard work on our libraries. It's great to know we have citizens working so diligently to kind of maintain some of our, some of our niceties that we have around town. Thank you. All righty, next up, James Kelly.
All righty. Good evening. James Kelly, Traffic and Transportation Engineer with the Town of Waxall. Tonight, uh, engineering is presenting the second reading and, um, proposed adoption of ordinance 2025-012, prohibiting parking on a portion of Red Oaks Trail. And this, these proposed, proposed revisions would be an amendment to Section 66-23 of the Waxall Code of Ordinances. Before I begin, though, I'd just like to, uh, frame the, the item as far as what our goal is tonight. So engineering's goal tonight is to clearly outline the engineering considerations behind the recommended action that's gonna be before you tonight, and to explain how it aligns with current safety standards and best practices. I also want to acknowledge the alternative concept proposed at the last meeting and discuss its potential implications, both in terms of safety performance and compliance with established design guidance. So our intent tonight is to ensure that the board has a full understanding of the technical factors, risks, and options before making a decision. So you guys have seen this before at your previous board meeting. This is just to provide a background of how we got here to this point. So if you recall at your June 10th meeting, the board unanimously directed staff to investigate parking restrictions on Red Oaks after receiving multiple reports, um, from residents along the area. And then at your July 8th meeting, staff presented a first reading, um, a first concept, and then after deliber- after deliberation, the board unanimously deferred action and then directed staff to facilitate discussions with residents and business owners to work toward a neutral solution that conforms with our standards and policies. Throughout the months of July through October, staff did meet with the business owners and residents to gather more detailed information on what they were requesting from each side, and then worked toward that neutral solution. Staff was very clear to make sure that both residents and business owners were notified that the neutral solution would involve a compromise, meaning neither party would be fully satisfied with the outcome. At the October 28th meeting, the Board of Commissioners, after procedural discussion in a 3-2 amended motion, requested a modified version of Version 5, which was the version we showed last time. And those requirements were, or those, uh, that motion included to adjust the no-parking area from 50 feet to 30 feet as measured from the intersection. I'll ju, I just noted that in particular, um, of 16 and, of 16 and Red Oaks Trail. Remove the mid-block crosswalk and associate a visibility buffer to provide seven parking stalls on the north side of the roadway, and retain south-side parking temporarily with future reevaluation. So at the time of your last meeting, staff did note that while a sketch could be provided with the requested changes, and we're trying to make sure that we're, we're wondering if we got it accurate or if there's more changes that need to be made. But really, staff told the board and informed the board that Version 6 could not be recommended as it does not meet our standards. So it's provided, provided you, in this presentation this evening, is both Version 6, that modified request from the board. And we think that we captured what you're looking for. If not, please let us know. Uh, but then also, we've provided an updated Version 7, which is the modified meets standards and provides additional parking solutions. So Version 7 really is a modification of Version 5 as well. Uh, that really helps to fine-tune, um, Version 5 and provide additional parking, uh, within that vicinity. So this is what we think that you're looking for. When it, when you recommended Version 6, um, this provides seven total spaces, 30 feet measured from the intersection. And, um, so, I mean, this is, this is very, a very simplis, uh, simplistic, uh, sketch drawing. I'll ju, I'll just note that this is a preliminary drawing, and it's not intended for use for construction. Um, that's just something that we had to do from an engineering standpoint and specify that. But the reason why it does not meet standards is because when we looked at MUTCD guidance, and MUTCD has a lot of flexibility when it comes to things that are not standard, AKA guidance, options, that sort of thing. It's really based upon engineering judgment and, uh, engineering study, which we did perform an engineering study and has provided that to you within your agenda packet. But we also looked at Uniform Vehicle Code guidance, um, and we, we just, this, this version just simply does not meet that standard. Um, and it also does not meet the original intent to provide a neutral solution, which was our original task to do, and it's not consistent with previously adopted ordinances, as we, as staff has mentioned previously, uh, previous board meetings. It also does not include this added high-visibility pedestrian safety measure with the mid-block crosswalk as recommended per engineering study and engineering judgment. And based on engineering judgment and engineering study in accordance with the MUTCD 11th Edition, which is the 2024 Edition, uh, the no-parking zone adjacent to the marked crosswalk at NC16 shall be extended to 50 feet as measured from the crosswalk. So just note that difference in language there. That's something that helped us to gain some extra parking spaces, um, which staff was able to gain one additional parking space on each side of the roadway with a modification of that language. And that language still additionally meets the Uniform Vehicle Code guidance. Furthermore, I'll just note that, you know, it's, it's tough to work through these things, but the reality is that engineering staff cannot legally sign or seal plans that do not meet standards. And really, if you continue moving forward with Version 6, um, if that Version 6 is implemented against engineering judgment and against engineering study, if in the event that someone is severely injured or killed, there will be high legal risk that the board has to, um, has to recognize. So when we modified it and fine-tuned Version 7, before, if you recall, Version 5 only had 11 parking spaces. Um, with that slight modification, instead of 50 feet as measured from the stop bar, we did as measured from the crosswalk. We're still meeting the minimum requirements from Uniform Vehicle Code, um, and we were able to pick up an extra space there, as well as we shifted down the mid-block crosswalk just a little bit further down, um, to the west there. So we were able to pick up a spot on both sides. So really, if you recall, the original request was five to seven parking spaces total. We've gone from, throughout the various versions, we've gone from the, the original five to seven to nine spots to 11, which is what you saw last time, to ultimately now 13. And this truly is the maximized solution. And I'll note, whenever you delineate parking spaces along the roadway, which is what this solution is, you also have to account for at least one of those parking spaces being ADA or Americans with Disabilities Act accessible. So with this modified version, um, this does conform with regulation standards and guidance. It supplies a total of 13 on-street parking spaces with options on both sides of the roadway. And I know that comes up a lot, and I know that that's also a tough subject. But as far as meeting our standard, I referenced it within the drawing there. Um, it does meet our standard to have parking on both sides of the roadway. Um, with that said, also, we're providing for additional spacing for school buses along that ingress and egress point. You can see that as 50 feet measured from the crosswalk, um, to account for those extra, um, larger turning movements. In addition, uh, this is an option, it does not have to be implemented, and really, if it is implemented, it would be a decision for later. As far as providing an option for resident parking only through a permit program beyond the business frontages. So that's, that truly is an option for you all to consider, on whether or not you would like to implement that or not. Um, as far as the other stuff, we've minimized the on-street parking as best we can to be conformance with the site distance and line-of-site requirements. We've also utilized FHWA proven safety countermeasures such as crosswalk visibility enhancements, enhanced delineation, and layers of added system redundancy, and this is critical, uh, to promote safer pedestrian crossings. In addition, uh, we've delineated the parking, so this is where things, um, become a little bit more, um, complex, because once you delineate the parking, you have to then conform to the standards. So if you choose not to delineate the parking, then it is as it would be today, minus the recommendation for the mid-block crosswalk. Um, in addition, this delineation of parking in non-parking areas minimizes the risks that we've observed within the field as far as drivers parking too far into the roadway or hover, overhanging into the sidewalk. And this truly is the, I will say, the neutral maximized solution that addresses key concerns from both resident owners and, uh, from, from business owners and residents while providing for an actionable, balanced, cost-effective plan. And that's something that we've also got a few questions on as far as, you know, the implementation of this. A lot, a large cost of the implementation is based upon the ADA requirements. So when you add an ADA crosswalk, you know, the going rate for that ranges between $2,500 to $3,000 for a single ADA crosswalk. We have three in this solution, so you're already up to nine grand with that. And then you add on the additional ADA parking accessibility. Now you're up to about 12, 13 grand. You add the signage, the striping, now you're at 15. Um, luckily, though, we have, uh, labor with our Public Services Department that can help bring down the overall cost, and they have the skills and experience to be able to implement something like this. So as far as the financial impact, yes, it will be $15,000. Uh, with that said, there are funds that the board can choose, such as using Pell Bill funds, with the caveat that you cannot use Pell Bill funds for the streetlights. That will have to come out of separate funding. Um, but besides that, $15,000 from a transportation perspective is very, very cost-effective. Most of the times, we're dealing with projects in excess of $1 million. So just to put that into perspective. Also, here's the regulation and guidance review that we talked about last time. I'm not gonna go over it again as much, in as much detail as I did last time, but the town does have the authority to, um, prohibit parking spaces in the public right-of-way. These are parking spaces within the public right-of-way. This is not private parking for private businesses. This is public parking for, for all users. In addition, we are conforming with the Waxall Code of Ordinances, Chapter 66, the FHWA proven safety countermeasures, the FHWA Pedestrian Facilities User Guide, the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, which is published by FHWA, the American Association of State and Highway Transportation Officials, ASHTO. And then also, uh, you heard some information on the NCDO2 Traffic Engineering and Safety Systems Branch, mid-block crosswalks, and public comment earlier. I'd just like to reemphasize the fact that, um, there is an engineering study that's been conducted for this, and it's within your, uh, full agenda packet. So with that, that leads us to the recommended action, which is to do, to adopt the ordinance as presented, which would basically to mirror, uh, Version 7, where you have the, um, the no-parking on both sides of Red Oaks Trail as measured from a point 50 feet west of the crosswalk near the intersection of 16 and Red Oaks Trail. No parking in any of those designated prohibited parking areas along Red Oaks Trail. And then, of course, um, the chief of police or his designate, he is authorized to post no-parking signs to inform the public of this ordinance and regulate parking and traffic on these roadways. And I'll just add one more caveat, which is, you know, given the temperatures, I mean, you, you've seen that it's snowing tonight. It's very difficult to, um, implement any of this at this current point in time just because we're not meeting those minimums, uh, temperature requirements, um, especially when you start to have freezing temperatures in these winter months. So really, realistically, once this is implemented, if it's implemented, uh, work will likely begin April 2026, based upon the seasonal temperatures and based upon labor availability. And I've included a bunch of references, um, within the slides for you all. If you have any questions, more than happy to help address those.
So the question I had was the ADA parking spot that was triggered by 11 parking spots. So by adding 11, you had to implement one ADA?
So the standard is, is one to 25. You have to have one ADA spot, and you cannot count the private ADA spots that are internal to the site. So whenever you start to designate parking on the street, for every one to 25 spots, you have to have at least one ADA spot.
Does it make sense to add that ADA even though it's? I mean, there's some in the businesses, which is likely the person who uses that. But you're saying that by virtue of adding any parking spaces, that triggers the need to add one ADA at least?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Well, thank you. I know you've been doing this for a long time, meeting with everyone and trying to find the balance. I really appreciate it. I do have concerns, uh, if, can you go back to the Version 7?
That's what?
Yeah. Like normally, we're trying to address the concerns of both sides. And, um, if the businesses were comfortable between five and seven spots, originally, we were gonna give them nine, just on the north side. I thought that was a good compromise. I have concerns with spaces three and four, uh, just because... I have concerns with spaces three and four, just because upon sitting here at this intersection at different times of the day, I've noticed that when vehicles come off of 16 and make that right, they're taking that pretty quick. You know, they're, they're going at 35, 40 miles an hour, they're not really, sometimes not slowing down, and they're just making that sharp right. So that would concern me, if we could get rid of those, that three and four, although it, you know, it does cause some parking with one or two, I mean, that would be a little bit of a middle ground there, but I just don't see how this, you know, you've been directed to this, so I get it, but I just don't see how this addresses the concerns of the residents, because they're concerned about traffic on, parking on both sides, and now we're actually doing that. So if this were to move forward, I find that it just don't do anything and leave it the way it is. Why spend $15,000 on allowing what's already happening? It sounds crazy.
Any other questions or comments? Are we ready to vote on this matter?
I'd like to make a motion to defer until the new board can weigh in on it.
We have a motion to defer, can I get a vote on a deferment? All in favor of deferment? Any opposed? Three opposed, deferment does not carry. So does that mean we want to vote on this then? Could I get a motion then to adopt ordinance 2025-012?
Motion to adopt ordinance, ORD 2025-012, as presented.
All in favor? Any opposed?
No.
Nope, three to two, motion carries. Next up, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks for all the work on that, James.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
So, James, are you saying this isn't something that's going to happen until the spring, possibly?
Right, as far as the, the temperatures, the seasonal temperatures, it's, you have to meet certain requirements.
Right, well, it wouldn't be done for the next few months, right?
Right.
I'm not holding you to April.
It really, it really wouldn't be done.
So we could revisit this again?
If the board decides.
Yes, I think, I think it'd be a good idea to revisit this when the new board is seated. Thank you.
Something we can do. Thank you. Next up, Ms. Melissa Johnson. Come on down.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners, Town Staff, I am Melissa Johnson, Deputy of Recreation, here to talk about the North Carolina League of Municipalities Safety Grant that I would like to apply for. So this would be for a budgeted project that we already have for our capital improvement that was approved in July, and it is to install permanent bollards, and we got together different town departments and determined that we were going to use East North Main as a starting point, given that it was a, it's a $30,000 project that is allocated for this, and that only gets you so far. And this is an area that is not going to undergo any of the sewer line or water line, so this asphalt is not coming up anytime soon. So we thought, let's do this street. It is closed the most often for different events, our own town events, and then also for third-party event rentals that we do. And so we've identified the two locations where we'd like to put these, and these are for fully retractable bollards, so they go all the way into the ground, and they are flush to the asphalt, and then it is a simple deployment to lift them up, almost anybody could do it, it is a simple twist, it would be locked when not in use, and then they would be in place. What we currently do is use vehicles, and we use our larger bollards or barricades that we put into place by ourselves. So this would get rid of those. So there's two separate grants that I would like to apply for, they are each a pool of $5,000, that is the maximum that they will give, and one is a property and liability grant, and one is for workers' compensation. The deadline is the end of this month. Do you have any questions about the grants?
Any questions from the board? And this would eliminate the need to rent some of the temporary mobile bollards that we've been using?
Correct.
As well?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Alrighty, any questions from the board then?
Unfortunately, I think that's, this is the time we live in, we have to do things.
Unfortunately, it is, I think we'd be remiss, more than one event, it's crossed my mind, so I think these are necessary at this point. So can I get a motion to adopt resolution 2025-029?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope, motion carries, thank you very much, Melissa. Ms. Emily Learned?
Good evening, Emily Learned, HR Director. One goal of the HR Department this year is to have our personnel policies reviews, reviewed and revised. Many of our current policies need some extensive updates, so it's a very important project, big undertaking, and we'll be working with a firm to assist in the process. This will ensure we are compliant and current with industry best practices and laws, and we maintain a fair and consistent workplace, and then we ultimately protect both the town and employees from employment liability. This will be a collaborative effort between the firm, the town leadership team, the town attorney, and then ultimately, at project completion, the policies will come before the VOC for final approval before we, before they become effective. We've identified a grant through the League, it's a safety grant program, the same one that Melissa referenced, that can match up to $5,000 for a personnel policy review and revision project. The League asks that these projects be completed by a professional HR consultant or a firm, or an employment attorney, and that the projects are adopted by the governing body and implemented by staff, and we're to include a resolution or the minutes where the policies are approved. We have reviewed these requirements, I think we'd be a great candidate for the grant. The grant's due by November 30th, so according to the League, the timeline, the League has put out, they, the December, they would be looking at the applications, and then they would be awarded in December as well. Tonight, we're seeking approval for the grant application, and the recommended action is to adopt the resolution endorsing us to apply.
And the question that I asked earlier was, how long has it been since we had actually done a detailed review of our HR policies?
It has been quite some time, we have, a lot of our policies aren't condensed either, so we have, I would like to get them condensed into one concise, well, not so concise, but it would be a big policy, but it wouldn't be in so many different places. It's, some of the policies have been more than 10 years, some of them have been five, it just depends which policies we're looking at. But things change so quickly, I want to make sure we're current and, and going by industry best practices so that we protect ourselves.
That's my follow-up, is do we think things have changed in that time?
Absolutely.
It sounds like the answer's yes, so.
Absolutely, a lot of the project, they need to be changed or added to, and it's just time.
Sounds like it makes sense then. Any questions from the rest of the board? Alrighty, could I get a motion to adopt resolution 2025-030?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Next up, Ms. Barbie.
If you don't mind if I'll do my presentation here?
Quite all right.
Thank you. So we, we had 21 applicants to apply for the Youth Council, and we had 20 interviews that a committee of four of us did. The committee was consisted of Ben Smith, who was the teacher over at Cupperton High School, Commissioner Wedra, they will both be the lead advisors to the council, and myself as one of the staff liaisons. We also invited the Human Resource Department to come in and, and help us with some of the vetting of the applicants. So they, we have a select, a slate of candidates for you all to, to review. We also have a motion sheet there for, for you to either do individuals or do all the motions in one fell swoop. So I won't belabel this anymore, but I do want to say that the committee had a tough time picking 15 members to serve on this board. We purposely wanted to start small and grow the committee as it goes along, because we weren't sure what type of interest we would get based on, on the projects that they might want to do. So we have 15 regular members, they are made up of a sundry of different age groups, eighth graders, ninth graders, 10th graders, 11th graders, and seniors. And on, the motion sheets have their individual terms. We purposely wanted to do the, the eighth graders, ninth graders, and the 10th graders as a three-year term, the 11th graders as two-year term, and the seniors as a one-year term, because they won't be returning. So this gives us a good balance for transition, and we don't have everybody rolling off at the same time. So the recommended motion is either to approve the slate of candidates as a whole, or you can do it by individual motions and the sheets in your packet.
All right, we'll go for broke here, and we'll ask for a motion, can I get a motion then to appoint the slate of candidates to serve in the Waxaw Youth Council as presented?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Didn't think so.
And I wanted to add that Brandy was also part, part of that whole part, I failed to include my deputy clerk, sorry.
Thank you, Brandy. Alrighty, well, that's great, I look forward to seeing what the Youth Council comes up with and some of the activities they, they decide to develop for us. And, home stretch here, leadership reports. Let's kick us off, Mr. Scott Datsun, what do you got? Uh-oh, he's coming to the podium, watch out.
Good evening, Board and Commissioners, I have 65 Excel sheets for you this evening, in six font, if you're ready for that. Good, all right. So like we like to try to do, we want to do monthly financial reports for you folks, let you know where we're at, pretty simple, it was put into your packet. Essentially, we have, let's see, where do I point this thing at? Huh, that's pretty good, I'll go the other way, there you go. There you go, thank you, appreciate that. I have to give my cellphones to my kids when they show back up at the house, so they can figure them out. Right now, as of the end of October 31st, our target percentage is generally around 33.32% of the budget either expended or received, that's really not the way it works, but that's what our target is to be. On the spending side, you can see on expenditures, we're at about 31%, so we're holding the line on expenditures, but on revenues, we're going to be behind, that's where cash on hand, which is the first number, wait a second, there you go, cash on hand of 31 million, that's why, that's, one of the reasons that's important to us. We only get our, receive our tax receipts and other receipts quarterly and/or at the halfway mark through the year, so having a sufficient amount of cash on hand, we generally are doing about 1.2 million in and out a month, a little bit more than that at other times of the year, but we want to have a sufficient amount of cash on hand. Our revenues to date are about at 15%, so about half, the next time I see you folks, it'll be, it'll be up towards almost 50% at that point in time, the majority of property taxes will come in at that point in time. What will be behind are motor vehicle taxes and personal property, and some of those things that go throughout the year, as well as sales and franchise. We're, the state's behind by about two months on sales, so just that by itself is, is where we're at. I break down the revenues just so everyone kind of understands the difference between the two different types of revenues that come in, even though the state's behind, it's ahead of county, which is basically property taxes, but again, the next time I report out to the board, that number will be much higher and, and towards its 100%-ness, as you, you would say in that, or about 53% of all expenses, revenues to date. By fund, we tried to look at a couple of funds in our cash flow reports, as you can see, we're going down from July to October, that's to be expected, we, that's another reason to have the cash on hand, and then that number will change quickly November and into December, and then that number will basically be lopsided, we'll have more cash on hand to handle ongoing expenses from current revenues. The other two lines we like to watch are our capital reserve line item and our building inspection line item, so piggybacking on Kevin's report, we have a lot of inspections going on from previous permit applications, and a lot of upgrades, putting a deck on the back of your house, doing electrical work in your house, plumbing work, and those kinds of things. So our, our numbers are up on that kind of thing. We are doing a lot of commercial inspection, I try to give the board once a month our update on commercial, we are continuing to work with Waxaw Utilities, and those are improving as to connections to commercial properties, that had been a little slack there for a while. Our staff has done a good job of meeting with their staff to work out approval processes when, where things are in the approval process to try to mitigate. What ends up happening is they'll do a dual track in a permit, and one will be ready, the other isn't, and trying to get those things aligned when water can be turned on and, and those kinds of things. So we, I think we're getting ahead with that, but we do track that, the next thing we attract are cash balances by the bank, and what I'm showing you here are two lar, we have a large amount of cash that sits in what's called the trust, the North Carolina Trust, so these are our two more liquid accounts, these are the ones that we use for ongoing year-over-year operations or monthly bills, the truest operating and the truest Pell, that means Pell Bill, so that's what that is. Questions?
Any questions from the board? Nope. Eyes have sufficiently glazed over.
Eyes have sufficiently.
Alrighty.
Are you making fun of my favorite topic, my favorite subject?
That was riveting, riveting.
You need more Excel spreadsheets.
More Excel spreadsheets?
Yeah.
Try to bring.
Bulk it up with a few of the colored graphs. Let's see, next up, we have Ms. Dina.
Hello again, for events and programming at your spot, you have a cheat sheet for upcoming events and save the dates, also programming for November, and the backside is for December. Lots of cool things happening in Waxaw, please come and join us. For what's happening tomorrow, we are going to be in this room tomorrow for Veterans Day. It's a little chilly outside, if y'all hadn't noticed, we had snow tonight, which was amazing for Waxaw, so please be with us tomorrow at 11:00 a.m., tomorrow, again, here at Town Hall. And also, Mr. Bradley is going to be gracious enough to help us stream it live as well on Facebook tomorrow, so our, our friends that are, don't want to go out because it's a little too chilly, we have a way for you to view it at home, so that's really awesome. The 22nd of November is a wonderful, full day of fun for Waxaw, we have girls on the run doing the ginger snap that's morning, that morning, and then we also have lighting up of Waxaw, tree lighting in the park, and then we light up all the magical trees in the downtown, that is happening on the 22nd, starting at 3:00 p.m., all the festivities that night. There will be a sensory hour, and we'll have the small trailer on hand as well, so all our friends can come and play, which is an awesome thing. And again, save the date for Chris, Senior Christmas, Reach Across America, the Christmas Parade, and menorah lighting, all coming up in December. Any questions?
Question from the board? Questions from the board? Alrighty, thank you, Ms. Dina.
Thank you.
Sounds like a fun and exciting winter coming. Any other comments from the Commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Westlake.
So, I just want to say something tonight, and I'm actually glad that there was some presentations on the agenda tonight that support much of what I'm going to say. When I look back at my palm cards from my election in 2017 and '21, I'm filled with pride, not just for the town, but for the incredible team that worked to turn those goals into a lasting legacy. For eight years, we set out to achieve specific things, and I'm proud to report that those goals were met. One of my core commitments was to strongly support Waxaw-owned small businesses and entrepreneurs. We didn't just talk about it, we built a framework for success. Throughout my terms, I was deeply supportive of the Main Street program. The town received multiple accolades, including the Award of Merit in 2022 and 2024, and we celebrated a Main Street champion in 2025. In 2022, we took the next step, forming the Downtown Waxaw Association, where I proudly served as a board representative. And today, Waxaw is a vibrant destination with thriving businesses that is a success story for all of us. I promised support for smart growth development, the right fit for our town. I'm happy to say that every major decision was anchored in the 10 Principles of Smart Growth. During the challenging times of COVID-19, the board, under Mayor Ron Pappas and the incredible staff led by Jeff Wells, took on the challenge of writing a new land development code. We tightened our ordinances to require better design standards, protected green space with a mandatory 30% tree save, and implemented requirements for parks, trails, greater buffers, and traffic mitigations. This work ensured that as our town grew, it grew smarter, more responsibly, and in a way that preserved our character. We also focused on the physical improvements that enhanced daily life, a more pedestrian-friendly town. Through grants like the TAP grant, we improved downtown sidewalks, safety features, and parking. We secured grants to improve and extend the Carolina Thread Trail and established a separate pedestrian fund specifically dedicated to new sidewalks and trails. Early in my first term, we approved the First Parks Master Plan. While I never expected it, the previous board succeeded in building the beautiful downtown park. We also seized the opportunity to purchase and renovate the Rec Barn, significantly expanding our programming space. After 15 years of different boards talking about building a new public service building in Town Hall, our board completed the new Town Campus, a project I honestly never thought we'd see through the completion during my tenure. We advocated successfully to keep the Waxaw Library presence here. After it moved, we funded the Learning Center in the old library building slated to open in February. This will continue to provide the services used by the local residents. The four years of the Pappas Board were truly one of the best and worst times of my life. We were a cohesive team, and the staff felt like family. But during COVID, I was diagnosed with breast cancer in 2020. Our interactions were only through Zoom meetings, but I will never forget the incredible support I received from my Waxaw family during that period. That same spirit of teamwork and camaraderie earned Waxaw the 2023 Top Workplace Award from the Charlotte Observer. To Jeff Wells and every single member of his Waxaw staff, including those who have since moved on, thank you. You are the engine that achieved these goals. You are truly the best at what you do, and I will miss working with you. I do believe you will continue to have the same success with the new Town Manager, Scott Dadson. The success we achieved is the very reason Waxaw grew, nearly doubling in size from a population of 15,000 to 24,000 during my tenure. Unfortunately, with that growth came a toxic cultural shift. We went from being a town of warm southern hospitality to a town full of online hatred and bullying. This behavior was directed at the very people who were dedicated to making this town so great that others wanted to move here, to be called corrupt, liars, witch, crazy, disgraceful human beings, frauds, and cheaters, and even worse, to have the same things said about our family members. It's unacceptable. Never in my life did I think that public service in Waxaw would require being escorted out of Town Hall by police or needing officers to regularly drive by our homes due to stalking, cyberbullying, and harassment, instigated and encouraged by members of this board and community. This is not the Waxaw my family moved to, and it was why I decided not to run again and am choosing to focus my time and energy on my successful career and my family. My piece is not worth the price of this kind of surface. To the board I served with, Brendan McMillan, Jason Hall, Ron Pappas, Anne Simpson, and Pedro Mori, we were all strangers, each elected on our own individual merits, who later became a powerful team with shared goals. Thank you for showing the world what a great board can accomplish when they stand together. To all my supporters, you are the reason I ran and the reason I stayed. Thank you for your encouragement and kind messages when things were tough, always reminding me that we had more support than we realized. To the citizens of Waxaw, the three of us helped create something wonderful over the past eight years, the very reason many of you decided to move here. And to those who focused their energy on tearing down the people helping to build this wonderful town, I hope in time, as you enjoy the parks and trails, the downtown and events, the Parkway when it is completed, you will realize the great things we accomplished. It is now your responsibility to make sure the future board continues to protect the quality of life and displays an honorable tone of discourse. Our legacy is secured here, and it will speak for itself. I am very proud I was able to be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Westlake. Anyone else?
May.
Was that a yes?
Yeah, unless someone else was... I just wanted to extend my congratulations to Commissioner-elect Michael DiUlio, Commissioner-elect Daniel Ferris, Commissioner-elect John Jimignani. I really, really, really look forward to working with you.
Commissioner Wedra?
Tomorrow, our nation pauses to honor the brave men and women who have worn the uniform of the United States Armed Forces. Their courage, sacrifice, and steadfast devotion to our country have safeguarded the freedoms and liberty granted to us by God. To our veterans, thank you for your service, your strength, and your enduring commitment to the ideals that make America strong. May we always remember that our liberty has been secured by your sacrifice, and may we continue to strive to be worthy of it.
Thank you. Here, here.
One more thing.
Please.
Okay. I wasn't going to say anything. But I'll say this, I'm sitting here, I was writing something. As this chapter comes to a close, as Commissioner and Mayor Protem here in the town of Waxaw, I want to express my gratitude for the opportunity to serve our town. Working along so many dedicated and thoughtful people, both within this body and throughout the community, has been an honor and a privilege. This experience has taught me so much and reminded me again and again of the strength, creativity, and resilience that define our town. I'm proud of what we have accomplished together. While this will be, well, almost my last meeting, as an elected official, my hope is always and always for the best in the town of Waxaw. My hope, too, is the same, that the spirit of collaboration that was once here, of respect and commitment to the common good of all the people of Waxaw, will continue with those who guide the work and of those who serve next. Thank you for the trust that you have placed in me. It has truly been one of my greatest honors to serve and to work for this town. And when I was sitting here also, listening to something that was said at the beginning of the meeting, I don't want to end with anything negative because I am hopeful for the positive. So, I just want to say that the greatness of a community is most accurately measured by the compassionate actions of its members. So, I remain hopeful for the town moving forward.
Thank you. Any other comments? Alrighty, well, looking ahead, our next board meeting will be on December 9th. There will be no board meeting the week of Thanksgiving, so December 9th, look forward to that. That is our next board meeting. Without further conversation, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Any opposed? Alright, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.